I have not seen any mosquitoes.
It's dry.
Not at all.
I have not seen any mosquitoes.
It's dry.
Not at all.
I have not seen any mosquito.
It's dry.
It's dry.
It's dry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, universal with the virginity just for all.
Voca. I'm coming in here.
Austin Cool here, Charles Holder, Griffin here, Thomas here.
Wade here.
Pat's here. Games on. Meeting minutes approval of May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Other changes, corrections, additions.
Griffin moved to the meeting minutes of May eighteenth point three.
Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Griffin, second by Austin Cool to approve the meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Citizen input, seeing none. Full business, none. Meeting summaries, fire EMS. I don't know where Wes is, but he must be escorting the girl cell fourteen, getting ready for that. So we don't have anything there. Border review, Jeanie?
On border review, no one filled out any objections. So we got together, they looked through the book, they approved everything in it, and they spent their two hours waiting and no one showed. So it was adjourned and everything, we have the assessment book and everything is completed and sent off already. So it went well.
Library in one being Sarah?
Yeah, we just talked about the officers, President and the Vice President. Also, we're going to have the library director, she's no longer resigning, she's back.
Yep.
So we had to make sure that was gone back and not voted on. We talked about the parking lot, the reading program that's coming up, and then just some, there was like a library vandalism that was done by a kid. It was minimal, but they're gonna have to paint.
All inside?
Yeah, they know who it was, so it was handled. And then there's just some policy updates. Other than that.
So did they vote on the President and Vice President on that?
Yep.
Did it all stay the same?
All the same.
All the same?
All the same.
Okay, good. Wonderful.
When is the library parking lot supposed to start, do you know? Is it June?
July.
July, yep. That's what we got, so. Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you. Planning Commission meeting, we went through the developer plan with Duquesne. There was a bunch of council members there, so I appreciate you guys coming. So they're supposed to come back with another drawing with our changes, the things that we requested to council at the next meeting. And we have been working with elders to talk about this stuff, the fifteenth. Yep, that's when we're coming back.
You're coming back on the fifth?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Unless they say they are not ready yet, but they had to make some drawing updates. And we've been working with elders, trying to get, going forward here with the developer agreement now that we're getting close to having all the numbers that they need to plod into it. So we got some more information from them. So I think we had an haunting update that we added to our ordinance, just so it's just one less thing to have to keep coming to council for, so. That was about it. Public health and safety, that was canceled tonight?
That was canceled.
No form? Canceled, alright. And public works? Richard?
We discussed and approved a policy on mailbox damage during pawing events or otherwise. That'll come to the council next time for FYI. And we're working on an excavating, excavation permit, enhancing that, and that'll come at a future date as well.
Alright, thank you very much. And now to the elders' TIF one-on-one presentation. Everybody should have a copy of the handouts, he's not gonna do a fifty-minute presentation, so by all means, ask questions. Ask questions as we go if you need it, but since we're kinda knee-deep into TIF between redoing one and creating a new one.
Do you want me to have a microphone this time?
No, because we don't have a zoom going, unless he needs it for any, do those pick up? Yep, they do. There you go.
Do you need a stand?
No, unless you really want to.
No. Feel free to re-see. Alright. So I had Mayor, the Mayor set up the document a couple of weeks ago, just so you can kinda take a look through. It's mostly reference material, this is the actual presentation we use for our seminar in February, so if that's something that is in the future, you were there. So I mean, even council members could probably learn some good things about TIF and some of the municipal world stuff that's at that, so it's a real good seminar. I didn't plan on going through this page by page, but if you went through it and there's certain things you really want me to hit on, I can start that way, and then at least I'm giving you the kind of information that you wanna hear. If you're brand new to TIF and you want me to do a little bit of kind of the basics of it, I can do that, that's kind of on the first couple of pages, but I really didn't wanna take up fifty minutes of your time tonight, because I'm sure you'd rather go home or work on something else as well. So how would you like to proceed?
Well, some of these people have never seen it before, so.
Okay.
Meaning Sarah, probably Austin, or Austin, yeah, Austin, I don't think he has.
I have a little TIF just from school.
School.
Okay.
Yeah, if you just wanna get some highlights.
So why don't I, you know, one of the things on page four, you always hear kind of TIF or TID. So it kinda gives you a good idea that, you know, TIF is really the tool that you use to be able to maybe bring in a business, it might be your way of getting somebody to come to town, whereas a TIF district is a TID, and that is actually the area that you, that you basically draw your lines around and say that's where we're gonna make our improvements. So the next page is really kind of how we get the revenue generated in a TIF. You start out with a base property, so let's say we're in TIF number two, just happened to have that loan, and the base value when we started that TIF was about seven million, one hundred and eighty, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So on the ground, on the day that we decided we were gonna create that TIF, there was a, there was value already there, and all the other taxing jurisdictions continued to tax on that all the way through unless some of it was demolished. And I still think that once the base value is determined, they get to tax on that. So it's possible that, actually what actually happens if you demolish some of that, the base stays the same, the TIF goes deficit, and then it's gotta build back up that new value to get it back to positive. So the school and the county are always getting paid based on that base value that I just talked to you about. So as we go through, in case of TIF two, you know, you have a senior housing development down there, when that comes in, that is new value, and that's what goes to pay off things like if you put any infrastructure in, if you have an incentive plan with somebody. So it's basically, that's the money that goes to pay back things. Now, if you, if you borrowed money to put in the infrastructure, it would go towards that. If you didn't do an upfront type of a risk thing to the city, and you decided you wanted to have the developer bear the risk, you would do a PEGO, which is, you know, basically they have to put the value in to get an incentive payment back. So all the risk lands with them, they're probably the ones putting in the infrastructure or whatever, and it's really the safest way for the city to go forward. So it's something that we try to encourage our clients to stick to the PEGO version because it's less risky to the city. There are hybrid versions, whereas we, you know, we've seen where there's some upfront money, but there's also times where it's both upfront and a PEGO. So it's kind of something you hammer out during your development agreement time. So once you get to the point where you've collected enough money to pay off the improvements or that agreement that you have for the incentive, basically you have the closing date, and once you have enough money basically in hand to pay off the rest of your obligations, that's when you're required to close. Now, in today's world, you can keep it open another year, collect that increment, and use it for affordable housing, that's a choice you can make once your, once your TIFs get to a point where they can close. So after that date, if you decide to do the affordable housing, that's just another year, you still close, you still settle with the other taxing districts on any money that's left over in the fund balance, and that next year collects one more increment that goes into that affordable housing. So whether you do that or not, you know, there's a day where we settle up with everybody, and then that parcel, you know, maybe after that affordable year, or if you don't do that, it's that next year, it goes on the tax roll, and then the other taxing districts can start to tax on it.
Is that affordable housing, is that something new that just changed?
Right now, it's a one-year thing, so that's been around probably three-plus years, I'd say. There is some talk about maybe making it three years, so that you could extend for three years and give yourself a pot of money to be able to do some, you know, whether it's helping out with building affordable homes, maybe putting in apartment buildings that meet the affordable definition, which there's a, there's an income level that you have to meet to do that. But, or you can basically put together a plan of how you're gonna do things around the town. It could be that it's a revolving loan fund to help people maybe do improvements to their houses. So it's things that you can do, whether it's new houses or updates to existing house stock that you can use that money for.
I don't think we've ever talked about stuff like that.
So it's a, it's a pretty nice tool, and they're talking about making it a couple more years, I don't think you have to keep it open as long as they're talking about, but it's something that, it's there when you close a TIF district if you, if you so choose and you have the need.
So we closed one in nineteen, that's the first one, literally number one we closed. But I don't think there was any ever discussion about what we could use it for, because there was money left over, and I know we did the road project with it.
And this would be actually, you close it, you collect another increment, and it only goes for affordable housing.
Okay.
So the money that was left over in that TID.
Yeah, it was a dollar.
You could use for, you know, your share could go towards whatever you choose.
Okay.
In this case, if you, if you said we're gonna keep it open one more year, that, all that money goes into a fund that's just for affordable housing type things.
Okay.
So that's kind of like the history of how a TIF district runs, you know, as you're going through the, you know, I know there's some questions at the end of this, but I might as well address them now. You know, in today's world of levy limits, if all the growth is in a TIF district, and you're able to increase your taxes for the general fund based on that net new construction that comes in, basically, your existing taxpayer is actually the one taking all of that increase.
And that's what Richard had brought up.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've had, this is our fifth TIF.
Yep.
And I don't ever recall that being a conversation that we've ever had about anything, you know, whenever we look at that new construction. I know in the taxes, we have TID in and TID out, which is confusing to me too, why we have to have two different ways of talking about our taxes. But if the TID, in this case, tracked Van Holton's, that TID one, that's where all our increment was. We didn't get new construction in homes until twenty.
Right. So I mean, so one thing to look at there is, they've restricted us so badly on levy limits, we need some way to go up. And whether they give us a CPI to increase taxes, one way or another, it's always that increase is gonna be on that new, that existing taxpayer. So one way that you can think about, and it doesn't help the person that might be only alive for, you know, part of a TIF district's life, but when you close a TIF district, the value from that TIF district really, they take whatever the value is on the day of the close. So let's say you decide to close one before April of next year, they take the value that's determined on one one-twenty-three, divided by the equalized value of the city for that same year, and that gives you a percentage that goes on your levy limit worksheet. Now, what the state does is divide that in half, so that you can't use all that new value from that closed TIF district. And what that ends up doing is cutting the tax rate, and it's a way that the state enforced a taxpayer relief portion. So if you could see the, if it wasn't the fact that not everybody makes it through twenty years of TIF districts, there is, there is a rainbow at the end where your taxes should go down because of the new value from the TIF district coming in, because the state doesn't allow you to use all of it. So, so there is a little bit of a.
So when we're looking at our net new construction, we just get a number from the state.
Right.
How do we know where that, if that's in a TID or if it's just?
You don't, right now. I don't, I kinda feel like that, what I was hearing out of the Assembly was maybe that they were gonna try to put that on the tax bill of where that was coming from, and I haven't heard if that's real or not yet. But, you know, in the case of, one of my clients is Ridgeway, Wisconsin, and they have a housing development in a TIF, and that's the only place that anything's going on. So you know that the net new construction from that year is based on TIF district, TIF district values. And so you know that it's all, you know, they're not gonna pay any more than what the TID is, but, but that value is raising your general taxes, which is what your existing taxpayers are paying, and their tax bills are gonna go up.
If we, if we.
But if you can, if you can get development outside a TIF.
Right.
As well, I mean, that, you know, it disbalances a little bit.
Right.
But if all of your growth is in a TIF, it definitely is on the existing taxpayer. So that's, you know, like I said, that's, that's the kind of the bad thing, but that's also a thing that the legislature put on us with levy limits that are killing us, right? You went through the budget processes last year, and you're scraping to try to get everything covered with the revenues that you have, and what do you do when they won't let you raise it to keep up with inflation?
Right.
So it's kind of one of those, you have to balance with, you know, how do we pay for our services if we can't raise our taxes? And then, you know, it's, you know, the TIF district stuff kinda is helping you at least cover a little bit, but not enough, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, levy limit is just not a real good thing. But I, you know, I think that shared revenue fix that they kinda have moving along in the, in the legislature is something that's gonna help you.
Yep.
But the league, basically at our conference, the league said, we're going after that piece first, but then we're gonna try to go after the levy limit worksheet next. We don't wanna do it at the same time because we're afraid we'll lose one.
Right.
So hopefully we'll get something on the levy limit worksheet, but once again, you know, that's gonna be, you know, if they let you have CPI so you can pay for your services, that's still on the existing taxpayer. So you're kinda damned if you do it and if you don't.
There was quite the lengthy spreadsheet of the numbers that are going up for everybody.
Yeah.
Where I think at twenty-two percent, something like ninety thousand dollars, I sent you guys a copy of that. And then they're talking about a one percent sales tax back to each municipality too, so it'll be interesting to see how that goes.
So the next page kinda shows.
What page are you on now?
I'm on page six. So we kinda just talked about where the money is coming from to pay for the improvements, but during the period of time when the TIF is open, the entire tax bill goes into the TIF to pay for those improvements. So that of the new value, so, you know, there's that base value, so that seven point one million is, that's part, that part of the tax is going to the other taxing districts, but that new value, like the new building down on the parcel in TID two, all of that is going, you know, all the taxes from the local, the school, technical college, all goes to that TIF to pay off that improvement, until the TIF closes, and then they can tax that value then. Does that make sense?
The value is, is taken, but it's just parceled off into a different account, correct?
Yeah.
So there's still value in that, the bill is still the bill.
Yeah.
We just don't get it in the general fund.
Yeah, so they, they actually get the same tax bill that everybody gets, but it's, their, their tax bill is gonna have, you know, if there was a base value on that parcel, a part of that bill is gonna go to you and the county, and then the part that's, anything that was new of that value is gonna go just into the TIF to pay for those improvements or those incentives.
So the base, the city and all other entities are L.O.
Yes.
From what had existed.
Exactly.
The new increment is parceled off into a different account.
Yes.
To help pay for the TID forms.
Yep. Correct. Does that kinda answer the TIF one, or the beginning TIF stuff? Is there, is there things in here that you want me to hit on that you saw, that you want me to go through?
I've got one, prohibitive project costs.
Okay.
Examples of facility financed.
Fifteen.
Say that again.
What would be an example of a facility financed with utility user fees?
You know, I caught that one when I was, when I was at the office yesterday, that's actually kind of a tricky one.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm also on the water line.
Yeah, so I talked to John Cameron from our, from our, basically our utility rate study group that he runs, and we have, we have quite a group that does, does rate studies, does long-range cash flow analysis for basically showing people when they might need to do a rate increase and things like that. So I asked him, I said, what does this mean to you? And he said, he goes, I hate that wording. He said, really what it is, is if you do a big project, let's say you're doing the sewer project.
Yep.
Like we did this last year. If the TIF is gonna pay for it, it needs to be the portion of the project that actually is a benefit to the TIF.
To the.
So you can't, you can't say that the TIF will pay for the entire project is what it means. So, so the sewer plant, the new sewer plant is going to service the entire city, you can't put that whole cost into the TIF district when the users should be making payments.
So like a well, if that goes into the TIF area, to?
Water tower.
Yeah, anything that's in the TIF that services the TIF, you could put a hundred percent in there. Now, if the well was put in there and it serves parcels outside of it, maybe the rest of the city, you'd probably chop off a certain percent that would be paid by the users.
Okay, I think currently we're looking at possibly sewer on North Monroe Street.
Well, in, in the road, we wanted to do that, yes.
My question is.
Expand it. We have that written in the TID that that's ineligible to use for that TID because it's intended.
But that sewer, that sewer will not just service, that development will service other development.
It'll service the whole TIF.
But for TIF, we wouldn't need to extend.
But he's, he's also saying like a well or a water tower, if it's gonna surface outside the TIF.
Yeah, you'd probably put a percentage of the water tower cost into the TIF and have the user.
Play that back into a sewer.
Uh, sewer, it seems like you're extending the sewer to benefit those parcels in the TIF is what I understand.
Not necessarily, no.
Yeah, it is. It, it's so that it brings it, it's good, it can benefit, which is one of the things that they're gonna look at.
But it's also gonna benefit those outside the TIF.
No, not necessarily.
No, it's gonna go down North Monroe, it's, we already have everybody serviced.
Right.
So when we put it down North Monroe, then it'll service, it'll make it easier for that developer to service, it'll just run his mains up to the river.
Correct.
If you decide it'll be then be at the corner of Clarkson, and if you wanna go, decide you wanna go down either way, Clarkson, you'll have to add on, but it's just gonna end at Clarkson where the water ends currently.
And then are we intended to go west?
I understand.
So that we can.
We'd extend the sewer in the larger west.
Correct, to the potential developers.
Which will just load the whole TIF.
So that would be.
Only serve that part.
Correct.
So, and that would make that easily, you could go back to the hundred percent TIF.
If that's all.
Yeah. Here's your goal. I'm not real familiar with that.
Okay. There actually is a little section on which ways you can finance things, and I might as well just go through that real quick. Uh, let's see, where did that start?
It starts there.
Finance. So there's two ways really you can finance improvements in a, well, there's a couple of ways. The municipality can take on the cost, which is the more risky way. If you have cash on hand, sometimes municipalities will advance that money to the TIF, and that construction will happen, and then the, you know, they'll charge that TIF district interest on that, on that loan. Sometimes yes, sometimes no. It's a good idea to do it because obviously the taxpayer isn't getting interest income on the funds that are being used. So that's one way you can do it. The other way is the opposite, where the risk is on the developer. So for them to receive any type of incentive payment, what you would do is, you would have a developer's agreement that says that they have to put in their improvements, and they have to be, you know, they have to be inspected and whatever, and at that point, then, anything that they get for value in the ground that you can tax and collect that tax increment on, you can return a portion of their tax payment basically to them, it's called an incentive. And it doesn't have to be all of it. A lot of places have certain rules as how much they're gonna allow to go back to a developer, that's something you would obviously negotiate within your negotiation process, but the key is, is that if they don't put their value into the ground, you don't owe them a dime. So that's where the risk goes away for the, for the city, is that if they don't do the work, you don't owe them money. If they put this stuff in and they do what they say they're gonna do, and it's worth what, what the development agreement says it's gonna be worth, then they get their payment. And in a lot of cases, what happens is that they kinda stunt how much they're gonna get by like a certain percent, let's say they get eighty percent of the increment, then that other twenty percent can help you pay for some of the improvements that maybe the city did put in. So, you know, it's kinda one of those things where, I know Jenny kinda showed me that a one-page TIF, TIF policy, but it's something maybe a more formal policy that maybe gives you, the decision-makers, the ability to say, we're comfortable starting with this percent, and it might be that we go against that for specific purposes, because maybe you want an affordable housing development that has tax credits, and they need a big contribution from the TIF, and it's gonna take the full length of the TIF to pay it up, you might give them all of it. I've had a couple of communities where they have a low-income tax credit kind of program, and they, they got a nice development, but they needed to give all of the increment from that particular property to it to kinda balance out that whole low-income state kind of formula that they have. So, you know, you can have a policy, but it's also something that you probably put in there and say there might be situations where we give more or less, but it gives you at least a standing spot of where you're gonna start your negotiations.
Would you consider that, even like, I don't wanna call it an impact fee, but for like public services, if a development was of sufficient size to put a burden on that, that you would maybe hold back some of that to help pay for some of that infrastructure that needs to happen?
Yeah, and that's exactly what you would do, especially if you're the one that put the infrastructure in the ground, you're gonna want, you know, probably if you did all that, they're getting already a really nice benefit because they didn't have to do that. So in most cases, you probably didn't, you don't have to do it, but maybe there's certain things that you put in, maybe you put in the road, but then they had to put in utilities to get to their place, or, you know, something like that where, you know, there's an incentive for something, or maybe they had a really, probably a piece of land that they had to do a lot of work with to get it actually developable, and you maybe give them an allowance because of, of the extra cost to, to make that a developable lot. So it's things that you can kinda evaluate when you're going through and say, okay, in this case, you know, we know you've got some extra costs that are unusual, we'll give you, you know, this much incentive in order to keep the rest to help pay for our infrastructure that we put in first. And I think I, you know, I had the, in the frequently asked questions, Jenny kinda told me about the, the effect on the taxpayer, so I made sure that I put this in here for you, so you could read that as you go. We talked a little bit about closure, you do have the ability to extend your TIF districts if for some reason you don't think they're gonna work, you know, I've got just that kind of a draft of what's going on in TIF two, and right now, you know, we don't have all the numbers, but some of the, like the first blush kinda show that the TIF might not close successfully based on what we have here, and these aren't final by any ways. But, you know, if you got to that point where you knew you weren't gonna close successfully in the number of years you have to collect revenue, you have the ability to actually extend your TIF district three years to collect that, collect a little more increment, because, you know, the last thing you wanna do is stiff the. is stiff the taxpayer, the existing taxpayer with that amount that was deficit. So, you know, if your TIF district was old enough, there was an impact back in 2012-ish from the technical college change on the tax bill where the state took a whole bunch off the tax bill. That affected how much we were collecting towards paying for the improvements in the TIF district. So you're actually able to extend three years because of that. So in some cases, I've gone into a place that says that we want to extend it. We talked to the Director of Review Board, although it did say in here that it, you had to do a project plan amendment for that. That is incorrect. So page, if you want to scribble this out on page, let's see, it's 20, but it doesn't have a number on it. Or it says maximum life extensions. It says requires project plan amendment. That's wrong. Basically, we've gone to annual TIF meetings that we help run in certain municipalities. And we can present them with the documentation that shows that we lost revenues in a technical college year, and that's affected us all the way since then. And we can also show that the cash flow shows that we're not going to make it as well. And so we've done two, three-year extensions at the same time in just an annual meeting with the Joint Review Board. So there isn't a project plan because obviously a project plan can be, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 or so. It's actually a pretty easy process. As long as your Director of Review Board isn't somebody that's going to say, no, we want an audit, which I have not run into that yet, especially not in, you know, not in Dane County, and I don't think I've seen it in Jefferson as well, and the places that I've done too. So that's something you can do if your TIF districts are not actually performing as well to get closed early. Trying to think of what else I haven't taught you. We could talk about eligible costs and things like that, but it's up to you what else you want to hear from me.
I think your presentation is pretty well spelled out, and if there are a read-through, you'll get most of it.
Yeah, I wanted to provide it to you ahead of time because really it's good reference material.
Yep.
And then just have me clarify things that maybe you would catch when, what the heck is that? So, you know, so. I'm happy to answer anything that, even if you just scratch your head a little bit, I'm happy to help clarify that.
Well, I think the biggest difference is when we started talking about TIF five is we only know TIF one through four based on what we've been doing, which is we give somebody money, we give somebody land, we give people stuff. And we're still kind of reeling from TIF two not being very successful and three as well. So the biggest difference with this new one is that they've got skin in the game. I mean, they've put in a lot of money. They bought the land, they've done all the drawings, they did all the study with the DOD. So it's into everybody's best interest to make sure that this is a good deal. I mean, at the end of the day, you want them to be happy, we want to be happy, the taxpayers want to be happy. It's coming with that happy medium that everybody gets what they want out of it.
And you know, one thing that is in here as well is the pro forma analysis. And I know we've submitted a proposal to you, and the guy that actually is the one that's going to potentially do the work does over 50 of these a year. And he really digs into their, you know, they provide information that basically shows what they're using for building materials, what they're using for rents. They compare into basically standards and see is that rent amount makes sense in this area? Are they, is the construction cost makes sense? How much are they asking for? Are they over-enriching themselves? We have benchmarks that talk about what's a reasonable amount of return on investment. That report is all put together that says, you know, does the request basically satisfy the but-for test on that specific ask? And so that's really what that service does is it gives you, the council, the comfort of knowing that what they're asking for is truly what they need to have the project work. So, you know, it's something that is really, you know, if you give a call to the Village of Oregon, he's been working out there for probably the last two years, and they don't even hesitate to ask him back because the service he provides is pretty good, and he's really good at relaying the information, and the documentation is really good. So he works directly with a developer and the city to make sure that everybody's on board with what that, you know, what it's coming out to based on the facts that they've given them. So it's a really good service when you want, you know, when the council really wants to make sure that you're doing the best job you can for the city residents as far as providing incentives, that it's not something you're giving away, that people think that you're just handing it away. But it's really something meaningful that, why it's happening.
One of the things that, since this is technically our first one that we're doing, there's been so many of them done before this that we didn't really know what was going on behind all the scenes. So how much money was being spent and all that good stuff. So this particular thing is going to cost $7,000 or more, but all the money you put into it is all a part of that TIF. So the developer is not paying it upfront. The city has to front it, but yet it's all part of what's going to lend into all the costs. So we could, you had said in bigger municipalities, they do a escrow that you can ask them to.
Actually, it's not just bigger ones. They're smaller than you in some cases.
Still do it, yeah. Well, our TIF policy, which right now is being reviewed by our attorney, and, you know, we have $200, which he's like, eh, that's really kind of low. You know, you're spending a lot more on that. So we're working on that. And as we learn from this project, if we get in another project, we're going to try and do a little bit more upfront on it so that it's not us paying for it and then trying to get it back. But right now, we don't really have much of a choice.
Yeah, in a lot of cases, that pro forma fee is paid by the developer directly, and they can build it into their numbers and get it back through their incentive anyways. But, you know, sometimes the municipality pays for part of it, and sometimes they pay for all of it, and sometimes they pay for none of it. So it's kind of how you put your policy together.
Correct.
We encourage you to have them pay for it because really, it's their project. And, you know, if their ask makes sense, they'll get it back.
Yeah.
We do that. We give escrow for all of it.
Yeah. We got $200. That's our policy.
You can negotiate that part, I'm pretty sure. Anything else?
Everybody good? Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll be in touch.
Sounds great.
Get a tweet or call too. Thank you, thank you. All right, Jeannie, class A beer liquor license?
B, C, and D will be tabled until the next meeting. The publication will be out next week. We missed the deadline, so that's on me. And so we still have time to do it this month, but it'll be on the next council meeting.
Okay.
Sorry, B, C, and D?
Yep.
Yep. Because she has to publish it first.
Yep.
Yep, all that good stuff. All right, so motion to table B, C, and D?
Charles Cool, motion to table B, C, and D.
Cummings, second.
All right, Cummings got to get in there. Motion by Charles Cool, second by Cummings to table B, C, and D until they are ready. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance 2023-13, adopting a comprehensive plan update. Yep. So we did this already, but we did it with the wrong document. So Jeannie wants to quickly explain?
Yes, I was contacted by someone from the state. He said, he asked me, he didn't see any ordinance in our books that explained that we updated our comp plan. I said, oh, well, I have it. So I sent it from the resolution. He goes, no, it has to be in ordinance. It can't be a resolution. So I had no idea how to go about that. So I reached out to Bill. This one was written by our attorney. So we know going forward how to do it. But this is ordinance that we need to sign, and then I can send it off to the state to show that we're in compliance with our comp plan.
Right? So the good news is the state actually is paying attention. So when we had to do this comp plan, how many years ago? And they said that you had to keep updating on it?
Full column was slapped on the air.
Uh huh. Considering we do this.
The guy's very nice to work with. He was very helpful to me, so.
So your, the original resolution is in there, obviously, along with the plan update. So nothing has changed. We just have a formality for the state to say, yep, we did it.
Austin Cool, make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-13.
Cummings, second.
Motion by Austin Cool, second by Cummings to approve 2023-13, re-adopting the comprehensive plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, 2023-22. This is really from the utility. I think Ben wrote it.
It's just a formality for us to qualify for a social agreement.
Right, but I think Ben was the maker of this, so you want to.
We submit our ITAs.
Pardon me?
We submit our ITAs.
What's that?
And I intend to, we have to send in projects that could potentially be funded.
Got it.
It's so many years ahead because the state has to know how much money to set aside.
Yeah, so this was just something that we didn't do a bit ago, which doesn't really change a whole heck of a lot. But again, it's another formality that you have to go through. So the USDA loan, is that what's coming in in 2024?
This is the safe water drinking loan.
So it has nothing to do with USDA?
No, this is the state program.
So what loan will be coming in in spring of 2024? That's what's in here. It says the loan will not become available prior to spring of 2024. Because it's being combined with that, right? Is that correct? Must provide.
It's just a formality for us to be able to pull funding should we need it.
Okay, but this is all to do with the utilities?